Backs in for that, yeah. They told me not to eat bush meat, no bat. Don't eat the bats.
Counsel, if you would light up your mics. Are there any questions with regard to agenda items or items on consent? For the meeting? Seeing none, are there any council concerns people would like to get on the table? Counsel Linville?
This is not something that I want to particularly get on the agenda for tonight, but I did want to just kind of float it out there. That there, at the last Willamette Falls Locks Commission meeting, there was a piece of legislation which will be presented in the short session that will be looking at a mechanism to develop a private corporation that has a Locks Authority Board that will be made up of elected officials, regional and local governments as well as, it'll be an 11-member board. The board will still report to the governor, but that legislation will take several iterations before it gets to the legislature. The one thing that I think is, just a heads up for the council, is that there's discussion about each of the Locks Commission current members that represent local and regional governments, the Native American tribes, I think the Grand Ron tribes, Metro, Port of Portland, to contribute funds for the four startup years until the entire organization is put in place. We have, this is going to be on the Clackamas County Commissioner's agenda, and we anticipate that we will be able to bring to a work session for our next meeting more information to be able to let the council really consider this. There is no guarantee that Wilsonville will have a seat on that Locks Authority Board. And I think there are probably some questions about what liability do we hold if it is a private corporation and we're sitting as a city organ, a city member on that board. So I think there are lots of things to talk about as this goes forward. But we're, I think roughly they're looking at about $15,000 a year for four years, which would have to be budgeted into our next fiscal year. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we'll do, if there's, we get enough information and we're able to do it in a work session, we'll plan that for the 16th.
All right, that sounds good. Staff comfortable with that?
Yeah, I've been talking to Mark about this and he's aware of my concerns with the proposal, so we'll figure it out and bring the council.
So get staff familiar enough that they can help guide the council through?
Sure.
Yeah.
Working closely with Counsel Linville since she sits on the commission, so.
All right, sounds good.
Well, once we get an agreement or the legislation, we'll definitely have legal look at it.
Okay, any other council concerns? Counsel Akaval?
I don't know if this is really a counselor concern, but I wondered if we had an update or, I understand there was a small fire in City Hall a while ago.
The update.
It was put out, obviously.
Well, it wasn't really a fire. Somebody tried, must have used a lighter to try to light the paper dispensary on fire.
Okay.
But it didn't catch fire, it just melted some plastic and sent some smoke up the wall.
Okay.
They had a couple suspects they talked to, but the burden of proof didn't allow them to make any charges.
Okay.
But it does raise concerns and issues about building security in general, and we are working on a program with that regard.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right, let's jump into our scheduled work session items then, starting with our solid waste collection rate agreement. Mr. Ottenhead?
Oh gosh, I can't see. Where's it gonna end in the line? Yeah, if you can get, if you can get any eyes aren't the same with these. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director.
Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney.
Chris Bell, Consultant for the city.
All right, we're here tonight before you to talk about the city's solid waste review process and results and a staff recommendation. We did also receive questions today from Counselor Akaval, which we've responded to in writing with a memo. So I just want to take a moment, if I could, just to hand out a copy of that memo to council. There were some basic questions that we will attempt to answer during the course of our presentation tonight. Chris, you want to take it off there?
My name's Chris Bell, I'm a practicing CPA, however, my specialization is garbage. I am, you know, I used to be a little, you know, shy about that, but anymore, you know, after 20 years, it's garbage. And I've been working as a consultant since 2001, working on behalf of city, local and city governments, reviewing the results of operations for the franchise garbage collectors. And I do rates and planning, and I've been working in this capacity with Mr. Rick Windalters in the audience today since 2001. So I am familiar with the city of Wilsonville. However, this is the first time I've actually worked with the city of Wilsonville on this specific task. And during this process, as you well know, that every year, March 15th, the franchise haulers submit a rate report to the jurisdictions that they provide service to. And in that report, I take that information, consolidate it, and in this case, you have one hauler, so it's really easy to review. Look at the report and look at the operations to make sure that the report is comparable to the operations that they're providing to the city and the services. And then, in this case, I reviewed the information submitted to the city with the site review to Republic Services. And also during this process, we've had several meetings with representatives from Republic Services to review the information submitted and to look at the assumptions and projections going forward. In the information that they submitted to the city in 2018, this was the results. And what we do is we look at the services provided. So for example, residential is primarily the roll cart, commercial, collection is provided via container or industrial or drop box. And the combination of those three services between the revenues and the expenses, Republic had a consolidated return of about 15, just a little over 15% rate of return for 2018. 2019, which is the year we're in, we take known changes that they're going to incur. So for example, they have a labor agreement, so we look at the cost labor, we project those costs, disposal, recycling, processing, other known costs that are going to increase over the course of the year. We take those expenses and you can see those have also increased. Revenues last year, in 2018, you had two rate increases. One in July, which was a combination of a rate increase for operations and then a recycling surcharge, and also one in October. And those have kind of a lag, a revenue lag. And so in 2019, the projected revenue was higher than 2018. And so the rate of return increased from 15% up to 18.5%. So it changed to about 3.4% over the course of the year. For 2020, we're anticipating with some costs that are going to be incurred, a decrease from 18.5% down to 13%. And then we're also looking at, per your particular solid waste ordinance that was approved, it says that the first review, that rates would be recalibrated to return a 10% rate of return. So with the estimated increases in the year 2020, along with the additional increases in programs and recycling programs, and expected increases in costs, plus some decreases in the recycling surcharge, we're anticipating a return of about 10.2% for the year 2020, for the upcoming year. And if you recall, the recycling surcharge was a $2.50 increase for residential customers per month. And the commercial customers were to be assessed $1.50 times their size of their container, times the number of pickups. However, what's interesting is not only does Wilsonville have a recycling surcharge, Clackamas County also had one at the same time. And what we expect, suspect is that the rate increase for the surcharge on the commercial was input the same for Clackamas County as was for Wilsonville. And so the commercial recycling surcharge generated a higher revenue than anticipated. And so it's one of the reasons why the rate increase for the year 2019 is a little higher than we anticipated.
The city council asked that we go out to the community to survey some of the suggested recycling programs. We did a Let's Talk Wilsonville survey, which actually helped to greatly increase the number of registered users onto Let's Talk Wilsonville. What we did is we asked residents to prioritize five different services, and they could suggest other services. One being the highest priority, five being the lowest. So what came out was that the residential food waste and the styrofoam collection recycling were very highly desired by residents. We were, staff was very surprised that styrofoam recycling was such a high demand item. We knew that businesses had an interest, but it's fascinating to see that residents do also. And of course, the bulky waste pickup for ADA seniors, not quite as highly rated, but fewer residents are impacted. The last two items, fluorescent tubes, collection recycling, wood pallet recycling, was very business oriented, so we did not anticipate that many residents would necessarily be interested in those items. So.
Counsel West?
How many people participated in this survey?
I believe it was 133, but let me just double check that.
Do we send the survey out by an email or do we just offer it up? How does it, process wise, how does that survey work?
Yes, it went out via email to city subscribers. It appeared in the Boone's Ferry Messenger. It went out on a news release. So it was quite a, quite extensive broadcast, and indeed got more respondents than any other survey we've done to date. I'm just trying to see if I see the actual number of respondents. I don't know if, I think this was the first.
It's web-based.
It's a web-based.
Web-based interface, like a Survey Monkey kind of.
Gotcha, okay.
But it's, you know, I don't think we're trying to purport here that this is a scientifically valid survey. It's just, this is like an expression of sentiment of people who responded.
Right, 104 responses.
And that's a lot different than like if you got 25 back, right? You get a better.
It'd be different than our citizen survey, which we usually get a 35%, and it's like 98.6% scientifically valid. So, and I don't know what the numbers would be for the, you'd have to do some math, right?
Yeah.
I'm not expecting that.
Yes, thank you.
So the level of scientific certainty on this is not quite what.
No. But it does show you, there was a lot of sediment on comments by people who were very interested in these services. And we did get a lot of people contacting and calling us about the survey, actually. People who either couldn't input for some reason, they didn't have a computer, or they missed a cutoff. So they asked to have their input considered.
But these two, the top two do match what you would typically see for, in terms of demand for residential users. Styrofoam is always a big issue.
I identify with styrofoam.
Yes, as is food waste.
So in order to reach that 10% margin, which is in Section 8, subsection 3 of your solid waste ordinance, we looked at a couple things. We looked at increasing costs with the implementation of new programs. And we also looked at some reduction in the, excuse me, reductions in the rates. So for the new services we're implementing, one would be a residential food waste program. It would be comparable to some of the other jurisdictions who have recently implemented that program. The bulky waste pickup, which right now is limited to seniors at Sharp, I believe it's Sharp &amp; Noll?
No, anyone can call for it. It has a cost associated with it. But it doesn't appear to be well-known necessarily.
And again, the styrofoam collection slash recycling, and then the industrial outreach and the recycling on the fluorescent tubes and the battery mail-in box, and then plus the commercial food waste program, which has been implemented and mandatory by Metro. The temporary recycling, the temporary recycling surcharge rate reduction, right now it's $2.50. And to get to that 10% rate of return for residential customers, it'd be reduced by $1.75 a month to 75 cents. And on the commercial side, it would be the correct assessment method. So instead of the method that's currently being assessed right now, where it's per container pickup, it'd be the container times the collection, the collection per week. And that modification would be implemented on January 1st, 2020.
For some of the new service improvements, including the residential food waste program, basically it would allow food scraps to be collected with yard debris.
The additional increase for this particular service is due to the fact that some people who necessarily don't set out food waste, or actually don't set out waste during the winter months, would set out food waste for collection during January, February. And that $21,000 was based on, a similar program was implemented by the city of Beaverton. We looked at what the additional miles, or excuse me, the additional hours that were implemented in Beaverton, and we compared that and said, okay, if we see a comparable service implemented, then we should see about a $21,000 increase in costs.
Clarification question?
Yes.
So the way that's written is, to me, I would be thinking I could just throw my food waste in with my yard debris?
Yes.
But if you don't have yard debris service, there could be a separate container for just food waste? Is that what we're saying?
I don't believe so.
In Portland, it's like a little bucket. It's like a, it has a little handle. You can put your food scraps in it.
So you're saying that people would have to get the yard service to get the food waste?
Correct.
That's an important clarification for council.
You're talking about intermingled?
Well, right now, right now you'd have to have the yard debris collection, have a yard debris service in order to put that food in that yard debris.
I guess it would be co-mingled.
Co-mingled with the yard debris in the same container.
Correct.
Which is different than Portland.
Portland's a little.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Portland gives you the little pail that you can put on your counter. And you are correct, but the idea is take that pail and then dump it in that, into the yard debris container.
Is that what Portland does?
Correct, correct. And that's what some of the other cities does.
So that's just for people to keep by their kitchen to throw their food scraps in and then take it out to the yard debris container?
Correct, correct. It's a convenience.
Perfect.
So in Wilsonville, we lived in, when we first moved in, it was a single-family home, but it didn't really have a yard at a side, kind of patio yard on Grenoble there. And we had a tree in some back patio area for a little bit of yard debris, and we would just use a neighbor's single-family home across the street and just shove our stuff in there because we didn't have yard service. But there's a lot of townhomes and a lot of smaller homes in Villabaw and a ton of apartments in our community that would never even utilize this or could. And then, so when this number here that you have for 21,000, is it just considered the cost of the less than half of the citizens living in Wilsonville that would participate in it?
You got it.
Is it based on current people with yard debris?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's correct.
So that number could go up or down depending on the popularity of the service?
Correct.
Do you opt dinner out of this? Like if you have yard debris but you don't want to do food?
You don't have to put it in there.
Okay. Maybe the same way.
You dropped out.
It's not like you have yard debris, it's part of the cost.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. I will say, and sorry, note, we, our staff is looking at a community enhancement project to maybe recommend doing compost buckets for a limited number of residents. Who might want to opt for that? But to be determined by the community enhancement committee. The bulky waste pickup for ADA and senior citizens?
This right here is, would be estimated around 250 pickups per year. Or actually, we have $10,000 costing there for up to 250 pickups per year, estimated around $40 approximately per pickup. And that would start in Q1, 2020.
Styrofoam collection and recycling?
The idea behind this is that there would be a drop-off site at WRII. Primarily residential and commercial customers could use this. And we would do the, the way it's laid out right now would be a pilot program to evaluate the effectiveness and see how many people would participate, how many businesses. There is a similar program like this right now at In Sherwood, where they, where customers can drop off styrofoam. They are given special pride disposal, which is similar to the WRII, would consolidate it, haul it to a company called Agilex. They would process this stuff into an alternative use instead of disposing of.
How long has that been going?
I believe they've been doing it now for two years.
So good demand then, apparently?
Yes, yeah, they get quite a bit of styrofoam.
I will note, when Clackamas County Sustainability hosted a business recycling program here in Wilsonville in April, much to our surprise, styrofoam was a number one disposal problem for businesses in Wilsonville, particularly larger industrial businesses. The next item is a commercial industrial fluorescent tubes and batteries box mail-back service. So let me explain this a little bit. In 2017, we did a community enhancement project where we provided a, we offered 100 boxes, but we ended up doing like 113. And what this is, is a service that Republic Services offers. You basically get a box delivered to your work site. You fill the box up with fluorescent tubes or batteries. You call up UPS, they come and they pick it up and take it away. And so that has a certain cost. And so we looked at the program from a couple of years ago, and we found that batteries were also, half the businesses who participated asked about battery recycling. So we thought we could throw that in with the same program.
Same box?
Uh, the same program. They have different types of.
Same box.
Okay, break the.
No, actually it's a bucket for the batteries. These were before 48-inch tubes and batteries. And finally, the commercial food waste program, which we have already taken action on at the council and has been mandated by Metro to start this year. So this is a summary of the cost of the four new service programs, one of which is, were required to do, being the commercial food waste. The others, which are optional if the council would like. It reduces the net, the margin by 0.7%. What has a bigger impact is the temporary recycling surcharge rate reduction. Chris, do you want to tell us about that?
Yeah, this would, again, this was a temporary, and it was implemented in 2018 in response to the downturn in the recycling market. And right now, we're recommending that that surcharge be reduced from $2.50 a month to 75 cents a month. And that would reduce the residential margin from 15.9% to 10%. In addition to the programs also that we outlined implementing those. And the commercial surcharge, again, the implementing, instead of multiplying or instead of having the surcharge being multiplied by 4.33, have it revised to be assessing the way the city council initially approved it. And then for the industrial, for the drop box, reduce the drop box haul fee by $10. And doing so would reduce the margin from 12.3 to about 10.2%.
The net result is about a 1.5% reduction in the operating margin.
And that would bring the rate of return to 10% as mandated by solid waste ordinance.
So what's the projection for second year, third year out? You know, are we going to have to raise potentially the temporary recycling surcharge? Or are we hoping that the markets will be such that we don't have to? I mean, what's our expectation?
Well, there's been some, been some talk and some hope, and Mark attended a recent, what'd you call it, a summit, a meeting?
Yeah, there's a lengthy PowerPoint presentation, I think, that Mark went to that's inserted into your packet that.
The recycling markets appear to be starting to recover, both internationally and domestically. New mill capacity is coming online for both paper and low-grade plastics. And so Oregon's largest recycler, Pioneer Recycling of Clackamas County, presented that basically they're seeing an increase now in demand, which will translate into an increase in the price over time that recycled materials will fetch.
I do think that except for the residential food scrap program and the commercial food scrap program, we see the other programs as essentially pilots because we don't know what the demand is going to be like. So when the time comes, because the time will eventually come where they, where Republic Services would be asking for a rate increase, that would be an opportunity to look at, are these pilot programs something that's effective? And so we do want to do a rate increase to make sure that we keep those programs? Or are there some programs that maybe aren't as effective, aren't being used, and doing away with those programs could account for some of the rate adjustment?
Yeah, I mean, we always have been cautious about, I mean, it's nice to give people a reduction, but I don't want to whipsaw them with, you know, a big reduction in one year and then whoops, a big increase the next year because we undershot or that kind of thing. So we really want to try to smooth those out, you know?
When we looked at the 2020, we took a pretty aggressive stance on expenses. We assumed they were going to increase the direct cost by 3% across the board and on administrative costs by 2%. And at the same time, the revenue would be flat compared to 2019. And, you know, over the last few years, you know, costs have not increased, you know, at 3%. So we're being a little bit conservative on that. And as, I'm sure everyone well knows here that you're also growing too. So, you know, growth is a good thing to maintain margins. And so you do have residential and you have some commercial growth.
Okay, Counsel West?
I have a little bit different take on that recycling market. I feel that from what I've read and heard is that we're getting maybe the bottom and maybe stabilizing, but recovery is a little bit of a strong word. And three years from now, we could still be recovering from that really disastrous hit within the market. And so I think that, it just sounds to me that that's a little bit, nothing wrong with optimism, but that's a little bit optimistic that we're in a recovery. I think we should be cautious about, just assuming that this early, I think that's a little bit speculative. And it seems like we're bringing on potentially a lot of additional services while we still have a recycling market that is bottomed out. It is really been an international and national issue. And so it looks a little bit expensive to me. Some of these things are mandated, like we've already voted on the food waste to $7,000, but styrofoam may be in demand. But some of these other things, they look a little bit like luxury items over waiting for this market to recover.
Well, when we, when we took a look at the recycling market, we did take in consideration where it's at right now. And the expectation is that it's going to remain flat. We didn't project it to go down any further. So we took, I believe it was a.
So there's no projection that it's going to like escalate upward and?
No, no, we're assuming it's going to stay where it's at.
Yeah.
For the purposes of the processing costs.
And there was a discussion with Republic Services about doing away with the recycling surcharge entirely, but both parties decided to keep the recycling surcharge due to the fact that we, it's not necessarily certain where we're going to be. So there may come a time where we actually come back and say we don't need a recycling surcharge at all. But neither party felt comfortable yet to do that.
Especially when bringing on new services, right? Like you're bringing on all these new services, the recycling market is maybe stabilizing, but then they take the surcharge down pretty aggressively. I don't, I'm just, I hope we don't like end up on the wrong side of that.
So this slide up here shows you what happens to the margin as you implement each of the different phases of the reduction. And so all the new services that we noted, plus these reductions, bring you to a 10.2% margin. Right now, we're aiming for a 10% margin.
Counsel Linville?
That's a great segue into my question. And I recognize that these new services really are required in order to get us to the place where they're not having an operating margin that is way above what the target is. So I have a question about the tax situation, the federal tax. And wondered, in 2018, the margin was $50. 2018, the, the margin was 15.1%. In 2019, it was 18.5% or estimated in, in 19, that it'll be 18.9 and then estimated 2020 being 13.1. And then with these changes, bringing it down to within the right. There was a comment in the, in the narrative about the inclusion of federal tax, federal taxes which may have accounted for that operating, the, the larger number in their operating margin. And my question is, is the tax included in the, in the 18? And, I mean, which years was it included in the, in the operating margin?
It wasn't included in any of them.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, what had happened is Republic submitted a rate request back in, in, in 2018. And they'd submitted, they, they were used to submitting that rate request in addition to accounting for the federal income taxes. And so, they carried that forward into 2018, which is why, you know, your, your, your rate went up by almost $4.24 in 2018. And so, had they, had they not, you know, carried that forward, then, then the rate inquiry, the rate request in 2018 would have been less.
Yeah, and if, from the last work session that we had and the information that was supplied by Republic Services, they acknowledged that our franchise does not allow for them to account for their state and federal income taxes, but they did want to note to the council that part of the reason for their requested rate increase was because they were operating under our old system where we did allow for that account, that cost to be included. And with the understanding though, that now that that is not allowed.
And, well, no, also Republic Services indicates that income taxes accounted for four percentage points of their cost.
Sure.
So, that would contribute to that margin.
But, but it wouldn't, but, but it didn't actually because what you're saying is it wasn't included. And so, the 18, the 15 and the 18 did not include their taxes.
Correct.
Right, so if you included their taxes, it wouldn't be that high. If you included that tax, those taxes as cost, it wouldn't be an 18%.
If it was allowed.
If it was allowed as a cost.
Then it would have been 14 and 10.
Right.
Yeah. If we allow that write-off, then those margins would be lower. That's what they're saying, correct?
Correct.
Good.
And we furthermore found, when we did a poll of Portland area jurisdictions, we found one that did allow income taxes that was like we used to, which was Chalodin, which has an old franchise that has not been updated.
Right, I saw that, thank you.
We're going along on this one, Mayor.
Yeah, we need to move along if we can.
So, basically, what we would like to do would be to see, if this meets with the council's pleasure, we will bring our resolution back to you on December 16th, implementing these new services and the reduction in the temporary recycling rate surcharge.
Councilor West?
I, I still feel like that there is an unresolved discrepancy between how Republic Services sees this margin and how the consultants and the city staff sees this margin. Can you, I mean, I'm not a tax guy, can you explain to me why it was changed that they cannot include known taxes that they're gonna have to pay as an expense any longer? Like, why was that decision made or why is that, it seems to be somewhat uniform?
That was eliminated with the new franchise agreement.
But, but why did we eliminate it?
It's the modern standard. We had a 30-year-plus-year-old franchise that was poorly drafted, that we operated for a long time.
Well, at the time, I'm sure it was state-of-the-art, but it was 30 years old. Mark is saying is that things change over time.
Right.
And so, just because something's given or granted over a 30-year period and you're locked into that for 30 years, doesn't mean you want to carry that forward if it's not in the best interest of the city. We determined that it wasn't in the best interest of the city to allow that. So, when we adopted a new franchise agreement, we got rid of it.
And, and I will say, you know, we've had a lot of internal discussions with Republic Services about the income taxes and they're not asking for the council to change the franchise agreement to include those income taxes as costs. I think what they're trying to explain to the council is why they were asking for those rate increases back in 2018 is because they were doing it based on our old model of operation. So, to kind of explain why you're seeing an 18% number and to, you know, explain that that's not, their intention was not to have an 18% operating margin.
It's just a misunderstanding.
Well, in the long-term interest of the city, we want them to be a successful business.
We do.
We need to have a reliable solid waste franchisee.
Yes.
And so, we're counting on staff's analysis to be working with that and keeping the council apprised at what point the financials would indicate we need to do something different. Right now, they're indicating that they're a little on the fat side and we're trying, some of these, staff is recommending we try some of these pilot programs in order to bring it in line with current contract. But, as with any pilot program, that will require future analysis to see what the effect of those programs have been. So, I mean, that's what I understand the proposal from staff to be and the question then is, does council onboard with this approach at this time, recognizing that there may be future adjustments also?
Very well summed up. The only thing I would add also was that the franchisee can come in at any time and say, hey, we projected wrong or this cost is going up. It's like the recycling surcharge. That came to us out of the blue because the market dried up. We always have the ability to calibrate with them and sit down and talk about these issues. So.
And it's my understanding that this, 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 the new services, this rate reduction as well as the, the agreement, it was all done in cooperation with Republic Services and they agree to this.
Over many months.
Yes.
Okay, we want the staff to go ahead and bring the resolution back to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, if we then can move along to another big bite here, we have the Wilsonville Code, Chapter 9 Administrative piece, Ms. Guile Hinman. You're, you're all alone up here tonight.
I'm all alone up here tonight, let me grab my papers. The bigger file of the two.
It's a big file.
Thank you, Mayor Knapp. Again, Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney for Wilsonville. Tonight, I will be discussing repealing and replacing Chapter 9 of the Wilsonville Code, which is scheduled for public hearing tonight. So, as a way of background, the ORS, Oregon Revised Statute 4550201 consists of two sentences, which you can see in, on page 158 of your packet in my staff report. The first sentence gives broad authority to the Director of the Department of Consumer and Business Services, which the Building Codes Division is under, to adopt state building codes. The second sentence states that the building codes shall establish uniform standards for providing reasonable safeguards for residents of the state who are occupants or users of buildings. Now, as you may recall, that, that phrase occupants or users of buildings has created quite confusion throughout local jurisdictions. Subsection 4 of that same statute states that the statutes do not limit the authority of municipalities to enact regulations providing for local administration of the state building codes, but we are required to follow the substantive provisions of the state building codes. So, any technical or substantive difference that we would want between our local building code or the state building code, we would have to apply for that change through this Building Codes Division to get approval. So, the state adopts, adopts revised building codes periodically, there's, they're on a three-to-five-year cycle generally. The Structural Specialty Code, the Energy Code and the Mechanical Code are generally adopted around the same time. So, they were last adopted in 2014 and most recently adopted effective October 1, 2019. The Residential Specialty Code, the Electrical Specialty Code and the Plumbing Specialty Code are also generally grouped together. They're, they were all last amended in October 1, 20, effective October 1, 2017. I do know based on everything that's going on with Chapter 1 of the Structural Specialty Code, that the Residential Specialty Code is currently being revised. I'm assuming the Electrical Code and the Plumbing Code are as well, but I'm not as up-to-date on, on those changes. So, this is really small print, but I'm gonna give you the summary of what, what these are and you'll remember from Dan's presentation, which is the differences, difference between the old Chapter 1 of the 2014 Structural Code and the Chapter 1 of the 2019 Structural Code. So, the new Chapter 1 is on, starts on page 183 of your packet and it's got some highlights from me that I put in there. On page 183, Chapter 1 now lists under the scoping provision, 26 structures that are no longer regulated by the state Structural Specialty Code. So, it's, they are specifically pulled out of that, of that code. On page 184 of the packet, there is now a list of 20 items that can be regulated locally. To make matters more confusing though, when you compare the two lists, it's not just, oh, there's six out. There's eight out from the state and there's two added in to the local one. So, it's, it can be a little mind-numbing to look at. So, further background and why there's so much confusion. So, originally, building officials were told that the reason for the change in Chapter 1 was because of a new legal interpretation of, of that subsection 1 of ORS 455020 regarding occupants and users. So, what Building Codes Division told, told local jurisdictions was that meant that we only, that the state will only regulate buildings or structures where people occupy or use them. However, communications from the administrator of the Building Codes Division state that the reason for the changes to Chapter 1 were to clarify that local jurisdictions have the authority to regulate the administration of state building codes in their local jurisdictions. Importantly, Chapter 1, as seen starting on page 183 of your packet, has several provisions that expressly state local jurisdictions can regulate locally. So, if you look at where I've highlighted, it'll, they'll say, this is, you know, this provision is not part of the state building code, but, but local jurisdictions can adopt these provisions. So, the confusion is that if local jurisdictions can adopt an entirely new Chapter 1, why does the Chapter 1 in the 2019 Structural Specialty Code only call out certain provisions that we can adopt locally? When asked for clarification from the Building Codes Division, they refuse to answer. So, we're left with this inconsistency about what to do with Chapter 1, which is the administration provision and, and what is the real focus for local jurisdictions. Reaching out to counterparts locally due to time constraints for addressing the changes in Chapter 1, Portland is simply adopting that scoping provision in Chapter 1 from the 2014 Structural Specialty Code. We don't know the impacts or implications, but because Portland does not have sufficient time to address the changes of Chapter 1, this is a stopgap measure they're doing until they can go back and fully adopt whatever codes they need, they feel are, are appropriate. Similarly, Washington County and Clackamas County are also pursuing stopgap measures due to time constraints. What the counties are doing is they are simply looking at that list of 20 items and selecting whichever ones they say they're going to regulate. The problem with how they're doing, well, the problem I see with how they're doing it is they say, we're regulating demolition and abatement of nuisance or dangerous buildings, but they don't define like what's a dangerous building and how are we now regulating those dangerous buildings? So, those are some of the questions that staff feel are important to answer if we have time to do so. So, and the final component that I want to address with regard to Chapter 9 is House Bill 2001 made an amendment to ORS 455610, which now requires a local appeals board to hear appeals regarding denials by the building official concerning alternate approvals of construction related to the conversion of single-family dwellings. So, basically, if somebody wants to take a single-family home and convert it into a triplex, there are going to be new state provisions about that and we need to have a local appeals board if our building official rejected those changes. We don't have that and it's required by January 1. Local appeals boards are actually very common in most jurisdictions and so, we, as you'll see with the other changes to Chapter 9, we took from another jurisdiction that already has a local appeals board and, and use the same language there. Rather than trying to limit it to just what House Bill 2001 is discussing, we made it more broad to discuss all, all alternate methods, materials and design, which is also consistent with how other local jurisdictions utilize the local appeals board. So, the new Chapter 9, and I will say, because Councilor Lindell brought up that I didn't actually include in the packet what our current Chapter 9 looks at, looks like, I do have current Chapter 9s for anyone who wants to see what it looks like, because, because you might want to know what you're repealing. So, I'm, I'm happy to pass that out. But, so for our new Chapter 9, it's modeled after Corvallis, which our building official, Dan Carlson, when he was at Corvallis as the building official, he undertook a complete revamping of their building code. So, we use that as the basis for starting to amend our Chapter 9. And then what we did is we also looked at other local jurisdictions surrounding us to make sure that we were inconsistent with how other local jurisdictions in our area were, what their building codes looked like. So, we also wanted to make sure that we added flexibility and nimbleness in addressing the, the changes that occur with the state building codes. So, what we've done is stated in the proposed Chapter 9 that we will adopt those, those building codes by resolution. One of the reasons is, like I said, those six building codes are adopted at different times and the state also has the flexibility of adopting changes to those codes at any time. So, if a change happens in a month from now, we don't want to have to come back and do another ordinance with two readings and, and the same sort of rigmarole that we're doing now. Finally, the new Chapter 9 also creates a local appeals board to address House Bill 2001. There are other cleanup items that we added to Chapter 9 because frankly, the fact that they're not in there is not great. So, on pages 159 and 160 of your packet, in the staff report, they, I further outlined the changes that you're seeing in Chapter 9. Basically, what we need to do is we need to make sure that we are expressly stating what, what obligations and authority the building official has, what our application process actually looks like, so how you get a permit, how you can modify a permit, what the inspections are for, you know, being able to close out a permit. And also currently, violations in our building code are a Class A misdemeanor, where you can be fined between $10 and $50 or face 30 days imprisonment or both. So, we figured rather than having a criminal charge, that we would change it to a civil penalty with a sliding scale based on the severity of, of the violation and also an appeal process for that violation, for that penalty if, if a person so chooses. So, the next steps, we have a public hearing tonight and we have a second reading scheduled for December 16th. At that second reading on December 16th, we will be bringing forth resolutions to adopt the state building codes and to adopt the fees that are currently housed in our Chapter 9. The fees are not changing, we're adopting them exactly as they are. For the state building codes, as you can see, Dan Carlson isn't here with me tonight. We originally anticipated that we would try to address Chapter 1 substantively, that we would go through the list of 20 items, that we would go through the other provisions that expressly are called out as being able to be adopted by local jurisdictions and figure out what we would recommend that the council adopt. I'm not certain that that is going to be possible, so we may defer to what Portland did or what Washington County or Clackamas County have done as a result of that. Though Dan Carlson did tell me today, he's almost done, so with his suggestions, I don't, but I don't want to put that on him. So, we will be bringing forward resolutions, I just don't know how specific and focused they'll be on, on the Chapter 1 issues. The effective date for the ordinance and resolutions will be January 1, 2020, because that's when the new building codes that were adopted effective October 1, 2019, that's when the old versions expire and the new versions are the only ones that we're allowed to follow. So, if they're not adopted by January 1, 2020, then we will be out of compliance with the state building codes. And as council knows, staff prepared a red line of, of Chapter 9 that was in your packets and I haven't updated, I have those also here for council distribution. Those are proposals that we think add some clarity to the proposed Chapter 9 and, but due to the late distribution of those changes, we're recommending that if the council adopts ordinance. ordinance 839 on first reading, council addresses whether it wants those red lines included in the second reading, and also that council leaves the record open for additional comments by the public regarding those red line changes, should council feel that's appropriate, that the red lines are appropriate. With that, this is a very dense topic, and I'm happy to answer whatever questions I can.
We'd never know that you're not a building official.
Yeah, no kidding.
Counselor Linville, please.
So the other jurisdictions have decided to remain with the 2014.
One, Portland did.
Oh, just one?
Portland.
That we're aware of.
Yeah, that we're aware of.
Okay.
And I do know that other jurisdictions have asked Portland for the ordinance that they're adopting, so I'm assuming other jurisdictions will probably follow what Portland's doing.
And I think you also mentioned the two counties.
They're not doing, the two counties, Washington County and Clackamas County, aren't doing what Portland's doing. They're specifically calling out from that list of 20, which they want to regulate, but they're not going into detail about what that means or what those regulations would be. So those are two options that we could look at if we don't have enough time.
So we could deal with that issue at the December 16 meeting.
Yes.
We would know a little bit farther down, how far we need to get into Chapter One, and a better recommendation about what we would do with that.
I think that's correct, and I think if Mr. Carlson comes to you on the 16th and says, "I'm fully confident and comfortable with what I'm recommending," that you can also adopt those changes that night.
Okay.
And that's why we also decided to, or are proposing doing the resolutions, so that way, if we find out, hey, we missed a couple things here, we can come back to the council and say, "Here's a couple things we missed. We think you should add them in."
And it's likely we haven't caught every, I mean, just because of the complexity, because of unforeseen effects and circumstances. I just think we need to expect that there will be some cleanup to do.
And I think every jurisdiction feel is going through this as well. So there's no clear path forward. We're all kind of figuring it out at the same time.
Counselor Rockwell.
Thank you for that. I think that this structure and the plan makes sense to me, you know, having the ordinance and then the resolution so that we can do some fixing or corrections, or just as the nature of things changes, you know, down the road, that we can respond to that. Please confirm if I have this right. In the ordinance, which we're looking at now and have the new suggestions also with the red line, we kind of lay out how this Board of Appeals would work. And I did have one question on that that I wanted to bring up about the Board of Appeals. And I received some information about how Corvallis works with their Board of Appeals, what their agenda, sample agenda, might look like. In my mind, I'm trying to imagine, okay, what would this be? My point of comparison was, would it feel similar to a DRB situation, right? Where there's, you know, somebody that has the appeal or applicant and staff report and kind of bouncing back between the two. My question was, is there opportunity for public comment in that process? And if so, how does the public know to come to comment on that? And again, like, we don't have a Board of Appeals.
These aren't land use decisions, right?
Correct.
There would be no.
There is no public.
It's not comparable to DRB, because those are quasi-judicial decisions. These are more interpretation of rules as well, and they would be appealable to the state building. I just, I just did to you. So, no, they're not comparable.
Okay, so no public.
But their decisions could be appealable to a higher power. So if they didn't like the answer they got from our local board, I'm assuming they could take it to the state building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's pretty common.
That's provided in the statute.
Yes.
Yeah. It's more like a hearings officer thing. Okay.
Than it is where you present.
Where the public.
Except there's no land use issues involved.
Right, no, it's like when, it's due process, basically.
Okay. Okay. So then, I feel good about that, then. I was concerned if there was public, like, we don't have that mechanism like we do with the DRB, the mailings and the.
Well, it's not to say that.
Handwich board and things like that.
The example given wouldn't raise public issues if you're turning a single family into a triplex.
Right.
Neighbors might be concerned, but unfortunately, there's not going to be a remedy for those kinds of issues in this. It's whether or not you can apply those rules to that house, and whether or not the building official agrees that you should be able to turn it into a duplex or a triplex if it's safe to do.
Or what our requirements would be for you to do so.
Correct.
Exactly. That's what these resolutions.
And is the applicant complying with those rules or not? And so I don't think you want to turn it into a situation where, you know, a person comes through, makes an application, is told, well, you got to do this, this, and this. They say, okay, they do this, this, and this, just like they're supposed to, and then the neighbor says, "No, we don't like it, so we're going to..."
But that would never go to an appeal if they did this, this, and this.
Right, right, right. But that's, I mean, it's not the appropriate point, I don't think, to have the public input. The appropriate point to have the public input is in the overall DRB setting, where you have an applicant that proposes to do a certain thing, and everybody can say, well, does that fit the zoning rules? Does that, you know, something that is appropriate?
No, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay.
So, does any of the council want the current Chapter Nine to look at?
No, thank you.
Okay, and then I do, so there, I noticed like there was a place where a number got messed up, and then another place where there was a space and a period. So this is very minorly updated from what council received earlier.
This is the red line.
This is the red line.
Okay.
So while you're, that's being passed out just logistically tonight, you would be making a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading, but you would want to keep the record open for consideration of the revised ordinance that's being handed to you tonight so that there is time for public input. And so, public comment or public testimony would be allowed at the second reading, which is not usually the case. Does that make sense?
I think it's the right thing to do in terms of transparency and openness to the public, you know, comment, but at the same time, trying to maintain this tight schedule that we're on.
Makes sense.
So, and I wanted to thank Ms. Haukell, and then for the work that she has done on this, especially after Dan got waylaid, I guess. And, you know, I really appreciated the meeting that we had together. We had a lot of open dialogue about where there were nuances that could be improved upon, or clarifications that need to be made. So I felt really good about the red line version that we came out with, and certainly recommend it to council when we get to the second reading.
And thank you, Mayor Knapp. And I will note, too, that I also spoke with Counselor Leahan, and she was fine with the red lines as well, just so council's aware.
All right, on schedule, thank you.
Wow, I'm so surprised. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dwight and Eric.
SMART Satisfaction Survey, gentlemen.
All right, good evening, Mayor Knapp, members of the council. My name is Dwight R. Shear. I'm the Transit Director for SMART. I am joined by Eric Loomis, our Operations Manager, and we're going to lighten it up a little bit. You've had some heavy-duty stuff to deal with here, and we don't want to pile on. When I joined as Transit Director now some 28 months ago, you wonder, I wondered, whether my style of leadership would congeal with the team that was here. And you never know about these things. And so my style is a little bit of, I get, I take a little bit from Peter Drucker, a little bit from W. Edwards Deming, Total Quality Management. And you hope that something resonates with the team. And both of those gentlemen believe that if you can't measure it, then you certainly can't improve it. And so we've set out on this journey now for the last 28 months of trying to measure the quality of our product. And I think you'll be very pleased with the results thus far. We're not nearly completed. I don't know that a journey like this is ever complete, but we are well on our way to creating, I think, what will be certainly a transit agency that will be envy, the envy of all transit agencies in Oregon, and I think we're well on our way to that. So I'll turn it over to Eric to kind of guide us through this really unique presentation. I'm really in awe of this thing.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and councilors. So jumping right into the survey here. The design and purpose of this, we are starting to do a satisfaction survey every other year. And so the alternate years, we've started a demographic travel trend survey. So the demographic survey, we have done the previous two years and found that the data was very similar, down to the amount of customers that were surveyed. So we decided to avoid surveying fatigue with our customers to try something different this last year with satisfaction of service components and communication as well. So one thing that this survey was conducted in September of this year, over four days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, being the bulk of when our customers ride, and then Saturday as well. We had 415 surveys collected, 20 of those were in Spanish. This one's an interesting component with annual income. You can see 23% under $10,000, and almost 44% of our customers are under $30,000. So that is a significant number that may rely heavily on transit versus, you can also see, we do have others over $89,000 and in the 50,000 to 90,000 range as well.
And if you recall, in a previous demographic survey, the number of respondents that were transit-dependent was pretty significant. And so this reflects that as well, as far as the income level. So I'm very pleased that we're helping a segment of the population that really needs our service.
And so with that, looking at that as compared to the age, 82% of our riders are ages 18 through 65, so that yellow percentage, as well as the blue there. So that's a significant piece. And again, this is a fixture-out service, not necessarily taking our dialer aid demand response service into account. So another story this tells, looking at the lower percentage of our 65 or under 18, as we can do some marketing in those areas of town, specifically for students at schools, and the parents as well, to get students on the bus rather than taking a vehicle to and from home just to drop off the students. So that's something that we'll, staff will look at, be looking at improving on. Strengths? Might Dwight talk about those a little bit?
Absolutely. And this is, this kind of goes back to what I was talking about. When you bring in a new leader, how that leader will fit in with the rest of the team. And I think the results of this survey are reflective of an environment that is, I believe, a microcosm of the city government overall, and how Brian and Gina lead this team. And so we've taken on that, and SMART and Fleet have a group of dedicated individuals that enjoy their job. They come to work every day, they're valued, they're treated with respect, and what in turn happens is that they go out and they treat our customers with a high level of customer service. And so our operator conduct, as you can see right there in the center, rated at the top, and then the value for the service followed by safety. And if we can keep those three pillars there, the three legs of that stool in place and sturdy, the future for SMART is extremely bright.
And with that, there is still 1.12% for us to improve.
Yes.
So that's what we're looking at next, areas of improvement. So communication is obviously a big one for us, and that's both day-to-day communication with updates on when, where the bus is at, and if it's on schedule. That's what we saw most in this survey, and getting that information in real-time out to our customers, which we will be working on with a technology project for vehicles. A monthly passes, and just, this is mostly with the ease of purchasing and the types to just to make it easier for our customers, if that's with a mobile phone app or multiple choices.
I was just going to ask if we're looking at mobile.
That's potential with our new technology project, yeah.
And the two young ladies are looking out the window for where the bus might be. And it's coming.
Do you get any indications of what additional amenities, stop amenities, people are looking for?
Yes, we do. So more seats for comfort, so.
I think that's on one of the slides.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, more seats, we're on the comments, more shelters to protect from the rain, and then larger 1X shelters are some examples that we got in the comments section.
Yeah, one of our heaviest, more heavily traveled routes is a 1X, and so we got a bunch of folks squeezed in under a, but it brings the customers closer together.
It builds community.
Yeah, the way we look at it, yeah. So we're looking for smaller shelters. I'm just kidding.
And as we were looking, as we look at this, as this was going on in September, the survey, we actually had begun creating a five-year plan for our bus stops and shelter amenities, which we haven't had in the past. So that's something that we definitely want to improve on.
Yeah, so we've got new shelters going in every year. Yeah.
And then bus reliability, so that's scheduling delay, specifically on the 2X is what a lot of the comments read, using alternate routes in Salem or to Salem when there's accidents along I-5. And then route for arrival times and leaving on time, making sure that those are leaving on time. One thing with the 2X, this was done, this survey was done in September, our STIF route changes happened at the end of September, which hopefully improved that 2X delay that we had. So we'll be analyzing that data as it's coming in. We have about two months so far. A few of the comments here, we had 135 total comments of those 415 surveys. The first one there being more reliable to meet the West train. Several comments on loving the bus system, enjoying the bus system, and how great the drivers were in their service. That bottom one there in bold is, Staff's, one of Staff's particular favorites, that SMART service and its drivers are the glue that binds our Wilsonville community. Thought that was very important.
I think I submitted that.
Oh, okay. That's Dwight's comment.
So poetic.
So in conclusion, similar to the National Citizen Survey, SMART is received well by our customers, but we do have room for improvement. Responses certainly vary by route, as you can see down below in the service enhancements. The operators and the value of the service are what makes SMART stand out.
Yeah.
Is there any questions or comments?
Counselor West.
So I have had the great pleasure of using SMART much more frequently with my employment at OHSU on the South Waterfront. The one thing that I would echo is that the West or to get to the South Waterfront or even downtown can be quite the challenge, just get to work. But the best part of my transit experience is with West and with SMART, because, well, West doesn't have a lot of stops, but SMART in particularly. So I want to speak a little bit to my, as a writer, my experience with the culture from SMART. So when I hear you open up, I hear you speak to a set of ideas and methods or theories that drive your practice in your career, and set a culture and a vision for what makes SMART so great. And I know this is true, and not just something you're telling us, because most of the bus drivers, when I get on the SMART bus, they don't know I'm a city counselor, but I love to talk to them. And they're happy where they work. They really love working for SMART. And they're like, "This is better, and this is better, and I don't work for TriMed anymore, and this is..." Sorry. But it's true. And it almost feels like SMART's a little bit like an oasis in the metro area. We're a little, we're a little out there on the fringe, but I love how cutting-edge we are, avant-garde. I like how creative we are. I love the culture. I would love to see more ability to get into the heart of the city, which can be a challenge for even during business hours, especially, I don't work weekends, but I can see weekends would be super challenging. But even in the early mornings to get to the Tuolton Transit Center, or to get somewhere closer and not.
closer and not as far out as Beaverton, but more in the heart of the city center, maybe it's the Barber Transit Center, or maybe there's another way to get closer along I-5. It seems to be a little bit of a challenge. I know that we're not just going to serve that, but I know as a writer, I would love to not have an hour and a half commute and maybe at least cut it to an hour consistently, I think would be ideal for me. But kudos, great job. And I know that as a citizen of Wilsonville, I'm really proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. Might add a quick comment to that. So in our last STIF HB 2017 plan, we do have a project that includes a downtown Portland Express that we, we're working on. So in the next two or three years, we should see a pilot program.
And we are also, and it's preliminary at this point, working with ODOT on the Bus on Shoulder. We've met with him twice. And hopefully the 2X will be one of the first routes that gets that green light.
Fantastic.
We're working with.
People see that green bus rolling down the shoulder while they're stuck in traffic? That's the best advertisement ever.
Very true, absolutely. But thank you for the kind words, we appreciate it. Anybody else? Councilor Lindell?
I'd just like to say congratulations too. I think you're, at least in my visit with your leadership at Smart, I saw the same issue. I saw a group of people who took a lot of pride in their work and were really striving to improve customer service, and that was like job number one. So, and I think that, that reflects, it would be easy for riders to be negative about what they, you know, because oftentimes in survey research, people who have an axe to grind will be the first to fill the survey out. And so it's often, you have to take that into consideration when you're, when you're looking at surveys. So to get these results, even understanding human behavior in that way, well done. So I, I appreciate what you and your staff in Smart and Fleet Services are doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly echo that. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and appreciate the work you're doing and look forward to future advances in the whole realm of transit.
Thank you, Bill.
We have a couple of presentations here on new topics, I guess. Speed Reader Board, Mr. Kazel. Kazel, how do we say it?
Holt Kazel.
Kazel, like gazelle, only kazel.
Hazel, like Hazel.
Or hazel.
Oh, okay.
Hazel like hazel. I just learned something tonight.
All right.
Hazel's everything.
So my name is Holt Kazel. I am the city's code compliance coordinator. And recently we acquired a new speed sign to use in coordination with the existing speed trailer that we have already been using. It is a mobile option, so. It allows us to collect data and get information and utilize some of the benefits that the speed boards and speed signs provide in areas where the speed trailer was inaccessible or unsafe to be placed in those areas. So areas with smaller shoulders or no median options in places where we could put a trailer safely and cone off. This is able to be affixed to any poles. We have it currently out in front of City Hall, attached to a speed limit sign. It's been attached to a variety of different places already through Charbonneau and Meadows was one area we had it focused on for a little while, and currently it's on Town Center Loop.
This is the, this is the sign that allowed us to gather data for, I think, two or three weeks in Meadows to determine speeds both out of school and during school, right? All the data that we brought to council, that was part of this sign.
Correct. Yeah, so I had it there for a certain amount of time before the school year started to gather information on traffic and congestion, and then I put it there for another couple of weeks after to kind of compare and get comparison data available there. So it, some benefits of it that kind of put it, put it in front and why we ended up going with the one that we chose. The data that it collects, it's real-time and accessible from any internet device. So I, often they are Bluetooth is kind of the, what, the one that we had currently and majority of them are. This one through the software suite that it's provided with, you can, I access it from my computer, I can view all the data real-time with a slight delay while it updates every, every now and again. So that's, that's a key, a key benefit in that it doesn't, it is outside of Bluetooth range for accessibility for that. The sign, as I mentioned earlier, is lightweight, easy to move, easy to respond to more pressing issues or customer or resident complaints or issues that they bring to us. For example, I brought it up and kind of inserted it into the Meadows situation to try and gather data and kind of really be able to get a better idea on what the situation looked like out there. The software provides very in-depth reports. There's a number of reports available through the software suite. Easy to see, easy to digest the information, kind of what it's telling you. It can give you a lot of raw data if that's what you're looking for, but it gives you a lot of really easy to read graphs and, and data available that way as well. And that is the data that we use to kind of target where we are going to look when we're trying to address these issues. So if there are speeding concerns, we know when they're happening at, we know generally where they're happening at, we know if they, if the, if the speeding is as prevalent as it appears, or if it's something that we just need to do more education on. Engineering uses it. I use it myself for knowing when there may be parking violations and issues that come up with that route as well. So that's, that's what we have right now. And that's what I have prepared for, the information about the speed board. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Councilor Lindell?
Do you, are there data that discuss the reliability of, I mean, are there research reports that, that you have access to that look at the reliability of actually the, the speed that you're recording when the light is flashing versus what people might do when they don't have the light flashing at them and recording their speed?
Yeah, so there's a few good features with the speed board in regards to that. So one of the customization pieces that we can do is we can have the lights turned off, but it just be used to collect data. So that gives you an idea of how they respond if they are not seeing the speed on display, just their natural behavior. There's also a really cool key piece of data that it provides with almost all the reports. And it shows the change from when the speed displays on the board. So you can see what they're going, and then it shows that it decreased or it stayed the same, and it'll give you that data as well.
And so are you, are you routinely looking at those parameters when you're collecting the data on particular areas that you're interested in, or is it always with the light flashing with the speed?
Currently, we've been using it as needed. So if it's an issue, if it's a situation where there's a resident complaint and we want to really work on trying to slow the speed down, then we'll leave the speed, the display up so that way people can see it, and that is a more effective way to slow the speed down. Whereas if it's information where we just want to gather data and respond to it and see what the situation is, then we would use that with the display off. We've only had this sign since about early to midsummer, so we've used it in, I think, six or seven locations so far. Most of those are response-based, so we've been using that to try and address speed concerns. However, we do have plans to use it for more data collection and assessment going forward.
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting to know. I wonder if people actually, my, my assumption is that they slow down when they see the light flashing and they.
It gets your attention.
It gets your attention, but it's kind of like when you see the police officer on the side, you know, you slowed, they get your attention too. But if they're not there, you wonder what people are doing, so.
Right, yeah.
Councilor West?
When we did this in Meadows, did we use it with, they could see their speed and then they could adjust and slow down, or did we have it in like incognito mode where?
Well, the, because of that location, it would have been harder, I think, for them to adjust their driving behavior because it was, that location's right on a corner.
Okay.
So, but we did put it both, in both areas where it was visible and in an area where it wasn't. So we had data for both.
Okay.
And we had data for, like I said, during school and during summer. So, and actually that street is acting as a calming device because none of those speeds, it even got close to the 25 mile per hour limit.
If it's as good as it sounds, do we need another couple of them at different, more ability to, to have them around the city?
We always like to sample stuff and then see how they perform, and then if we do have a need for more, that's something we can fit into the budget. What was the cost of this?
I'm not sure what the total purchase price was. It was something that we discussed through the traffic concern team.
It wasn't a huge amount, though.
It was not.
It wouldn't be.
The stationary ones are what, like seven or eight, seven or eight grand to put up one of those permanent ones?
This one allows us to take pictures too, right?
It does. That's how I was able to collect parking information for like the, specifically for the Meadow situation.
Right.
So that's one of the key pieces of information I wanted to gather in response to that was what the parking situation looked like before school started and how that changed after school was in session. That was a primary concern is that there's a lot, a large volume of high school students parking there. And so I wanted to gather that data, and that's one of the, the better areas where I was able to take advantage of the picture feature on there.
I just had one other question. It seems to me that if, and maybe this is just how you set it, if, if it's set to 25 miles an hour and the vehicle is moving at less than 25, it doesn't record the speed, doesn't flash the speed, does it?
It will, so that you can set all those parameters and we have them all set a certain way. So how we have it set right now is it will start displaying your speed. It's recording your speed no matter what, but it'll start displaying your speed five miles an hour below the speed limit. It will start flashing your speed when you reach the speed limit and go up to five miles an hour above it. And then after five miles an hour above the speed limit, it stops displaying your speed to discourage people trying to get high scores.
Seriously? Human behavior.
Yeah, well, I wondered about.
Adults and boys.
I've wondered about the permanent ones because I've seen people, you know, blow through those, and if you go fast enough, they all flash bright red and they do all these other things that you don't see all the time, and it's like they're just trying to do that. But we don't have the ability to.
I know.
Collect data the same way off of those permanent signs.
We'll collect the data from the speed, but it won't do any like fireworks or anything like that if us were working.
Byrotech.
It has a strobe feature, but we have that turned off. We don't want people to think it's like a red light picture.
Seizure inducing.
Situation. It, it can take pictures triggered by high speeds, however, they're not, from talking with law enforcement, with the Clarkland County Sheriff's Office, they're not usable for actual prosecution. It's supplemental.
You could send a letter.
It's supplemental data that we can use to, to put an officer there at a particular time or information like that.
Could you send a letter to a citizen saying, hey, please be a good neighbor?
We could, we could, I mean, there's nothing preventing the police chief from saying, we recorded you at a very high rate of speed.
You know, please don't do that anymore. Be a good neighbor.
We couldn't cite him into municipal court.
Why can't we use these as, as a, not that I'm suggesting photo radar ticketing within Wilsonville, but is, is it just not, is it a different technology that they use when they?
I think so. I'm not sure on all the details on why that.
There's a whole statute, Oregon revised statute, you have to be approved by the legislature. There's only certain cities that have these. We looked at it some time ago for some red light cameras, but we decided not to go in that direction.
You have to post signs on your, on your city limits saying there's red light cameras. Here, there's all kinds of regulations.
There's requirements, yeah.
So that brings the ultimate question is, can you post the signs and not invest in the cameras? Just post it on the city limits that says you're being watched.
Signs are great. But we're not going to ticket you, but you're going to get an assogram.
One more sign to ignore, right?
Okay. Mr. Kazel, you also then have a new sidewalk repair program to talk about, correct?
I do.
This is interesting.
So this is the wrong presentation. The, close that.
This, if this program looks familiar, it's because you've probably seen it before if you've been on council for a while, because it, it is one that Ms. Kerber put together that we're bringing back to you because we have some citizens who have expressed an interest in it, and we also think it would be a good program to at least try as a pilot project. So go ahead.
So currently, the name's a bit of a mouthful, the Residential Sidewalk Repair Reimbursement Program. That's where it's at right now. These pictures that I have displayed throughout the presentation are pictures that I went out one day and just surveyed a community with more mature trees. And about 15 minutes, I came up with the pictures that are on here.
Like we're deciding?
This was all through Maury's Landing. So currently, the idea behind it is to help reduce or assist with the financial impact homeowners to fix their sidewalks. We want to ensure that they're safe and encourage proactive sidewalk repair. The majority, I receive a lot of the sidewalk repair complaints or if people, I guess, what normally happens is I'll receive a complaint either through Ask the City or a call or an email, and somebody will say, hey, I tripped over a sidewalk when I was out walking or running or, or doing something this morning, and it was outside of this residence. I will then reach out to the property owner and inform them that according to city code, it is the adjacent property owner's responsibility for the maintenance and repair of the sidewalk. Often that is a surprise. I would say 98% of the time that is a surprise. And so that is a bit of an unexpected piece. Occasionally, I will get sidewalk repair requests from citizens that notice their own sidewalk is in disrepair and needs to be attended to. And they'll come in and request that we go ahead and take care of that for them, and then that conversation is also revolved around the fact that it is the adjacent property owner's responsibility. So that is part of why we wanted to create this program is because it's, while it is still going to be the responsibility, there's, there's just not in any way alleviating them of that responsibility. It would be a way for the city to assist them with that and give them, show them, give them an option of the city helping out with that, with that issue. Something that the city can do for them as well for that often unexpected expense. Currently, how we have it proposed, it would be eligible for residential homeowners. We would be reimbursing up to 50% of eligible sidewalk repair costs. That, that process would be where they would be required to request three competitive bids, and we would reimburse them for up to 50% of the lowest bid. So we're not, we've had people that have had some rather luxurious concrete work done. We wouldn't be looking at trying to reimburse them for that, that cost. We'd be reimbursing them for the, the cost of the lowest bid that they're able to get. The funds would be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. We would be looking at trying to divide up the total funds allocated for the program by quarter, so that way all the funds aren't used immediately in the springtime and then there's nothing available in the fall. So we'd be looking at trying to divide that up in order to help distribute that equally throughout the months. And then the completed work shall be inspected by engineering. That's part of the process for a right-of-way permit, which is already required to repair sidewalks. That would still be required as part of this program, but it would be inspected to make sure that the work is up to our standards by our engineering department. And if this is something that we, that is decided to be pursued further, next steps would be, we would want to educate through the Boonsterry Messenger, make sure that everybody knows the responsibility of sidewalk repair is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. That is important, that everybody knows that, so that way ideally we can have more proactive maintenance and repair before it gets to a situation where the whole panel has to be replaced or somebody is running along on trips on the sidewalk and any, and anything else possible that could happen there. I would be looking at direct outreach to neighborhoods with more mature trees. Like I said, I was able to go through and, and collect these pictures pretty, pretty quickly. There's mature trees in general, you can find this. And then reach out to past complainants. There have been, there's one, there's people that have had issues with the current sidewalk process that have been uninterested in repair and have not been interested in repair. And so I would be reaching out to them to offer the new program and let them know that it's available and kind of informing them how that process would work. I think that this is something that would be really important to implement. It would be valuable to have this program implemented at this point in time, especially with all of the new trees that have been planted with all of the development and growth within the city. It'd be nice to have this program kind of well-oiled and operational before they come to maturity and we might need this program at a wider scale potentially at that point. So that's what I have prepared for the sidewalk program. I am seeking guidance on if this is something that council wants to further pursue.
I'd like to interject first here. In discussions I've had with people, they're not technically, you know, professional people and they look at a sidewalk, does it need to be ground? Could it be ground? Does it have to be chiseled out and replaced? You know, what do I, how do I make my decision? And it seems to me it's going to be difficult unless we can provide some kind of professional guidance. Now, the concern there's going to be liability question probably, but the question doesn't go away. You still have to decide, well, is that so bad that, you know, I need to get rid of that now or can I, you know, have it ground down on the step and get another five years out? I mean, so that's the practical decision that people have to make.
So we can, we can provide some pictures of what might need a replacement, but I don't think we would want to accept that liability. But what we can do is by getting three quotes, hopefully in those three quotes, you're going to get some contractors that maybe say, well, you don't need to replace the whole panel. We can come out and grind this down. But they're still going to have to get a permit to work in the cities right of way. So the staff will be involved to some degree.
Yeah. It seems problematic to me, you know, which isn't to say we shouldn't be trying to do something. The other piece is that I've been to some of these conferences, there are some innovative technologies about using flexible material over root intrusion areas on sidewalks that don't involve a full concrete pore. And I'm wondering if we can and should do some research as to where, you know, what those processes are and what type of situations they might be applicable for, at least try them out.
Well, we could certainly do that for our own sidewalks. And I know we do some grinding of our own sidewalks now. I don't know if Delora has anything she'd want to add to the discussion or not, but I think what you're looking at here for replacement of repair of a sidewalk is that you're going to be getting the folks that really, where you see those ones that are just heaving up in the air and they're a clear trip hazard. I'm not sure that there's much. You can do beyond.
That would be more of a question on that picture right there now, you know? Well, do I do, what do I do with that? I mean, this is, you know, grind that off a little bit and, you know?
That looks like a replacement to me, but.
So Delora Kerber, Public Works Director, there are some kind of industry standards, if you will, of if it's a half inch or less, you can grind it, but over a half inch, it needs to be replaced. And that has to do with the size of the concrete panel, is you can only grind so much until the point where you weaken the panel.
So we could provide that to homeowners to say, here are some industry standards.
Because they're not going to have, they're not going to have a clue about that unless we, you know, provide some of that context for them.
Yeah, we can do that. And I, and I think in the, in the program and what we put on our website, we can put some pictures, examples and stuff like that, put together some marketing information to put on door hangers for areas if you're out walking around and you see a problem area, you can put a door hanger on there with a contact. So there's more we can do in terms of information.
So to me, those steps are imperative to have a successful program and people be receptive to it. I don't think it works without that, but that's just my view.
So we can, we can definitely do that before we implement anything. The question before you tonight is whether you want to even go down this road in terms of a program.
Council West. Yeah, getting the news that you have to repair your sidewalk is probably less exciting than having to buy tires. It's not exactly like that thing that makes homeowners like, yay, I'm getting a new kitchen. It's nothing like that. I have no, what is something like this cost a homeowner? And then what would the ballpark, I guess? And then what would the, if we pay 50% of that? I mean, you went out in like, what, you said in a very short period of time and just saw a lot of opportunities. So what would the expense to the city be? And are there other avenues besides just 50% reimbursement, reimbursement? Have we thought about making it income qualified, where people based on income can have a sliding scale of support? Are there interest free loans the city can provide? Is that getting super hairy and into things we don't want to do?
We don't want to do that.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if there's any other ideas besides just cutting a 50% check or what would that cost the city potentially?
In both of my former cities, we had small grant programs between $10,000 and $20,000 a year. It was utilized mostly up to 100%. And it was mostly self-report, right? I have a sidewalk and people don't know that it's their responsibility. I mean, it's not, it's not out of the ordinary for us to put the responsibility back on the property owner, just like we are responsible for our sidewalks for all of our public facilities. So that's kind of industry standard where you see problem areas like this. I mean, that's, that's something that, you know, that's a true trip hazard. So we want to bring that to folks' attention and have them repair it.
The cost issue goes crazy when it's the tree that's growing in the median strip that has the roots that are raising it up. So you not only have to chisel and repair the sidewalk, you potentially are going to be required to remove and replace the tree at the same time, which on a mature tree is a pretty expensive proposition.
And that's where, that's where I think it's going to get complicated. I agree, Mayor, and that's going to require some education and some assistance by staff to, when we're out there doing inspections, to say, well, you can replace that panel, but yours is going to have the same problem in two years, right? So that's a different story. But we also have a grant program for street trees now too.
We do.
We can work with folks where we think that the street tree needs to probably be replaced if we can't clip the roots in a safe way. So there's going to be coordination, communication from Public Works and Mr. Casle, not Kazel, as I've been calling him since he joined our staff. So thanks for that.
That's all right. Making them income qualified is not a good idea?
No. It's just too much to administer the program. We would be having to take in financial information and tax returns from people. We're not set up to do something like that.
Council Envo.
I'm wondering how you can manage a program that is first come, first served, but retain some money throughout the year for, because if I've asked for it and I, there's no more money for the fall quarter or the first quarter of the year and you're telling me, am I still on the list?
Yeah, you would be on the list, but if we've, if we said that we're going to say, you know, say we have a $20,000 program or in this case, we're recommending grant. We would say through the first six months, we're going to make $5,000 or first quarter. I mean, because you're not going to be doing this in the winter, right? It's going to be summer, spring.
You could.
But concrete doesn't dry.
Typically wouldn't want to be doing concrete in December through, say, February.
And lower than 40 degrees.
So we can stagger how much funds we release, when we release them, and then we could make it available again. And if somebody's put their name on a list and said, well, I'll just wait till spring, we can certainly do that too. We have the flexibility to do whatever we want with this program.
Okay.
Within reason.
So Council, do you think this is a good idea?
Council Acravol.
I think it is a good idea. I think that, you know, your points about having some education and pairing it with the street replacement, I could see a little complimentary brochure packets going out or something like that. Because I, I think, I would assume that that would be one of the immediate questions like, well, you know, here's the issue. Yes, we need to deal with it now, but what could we be doing to prevent this or to avoid having this happen in the future or things like that?
So one of the things is many of the problematic areas are prior to when we would put in root barrier along the sidewalk. And/or there were planter strips that were just woefully small for the type of tree. And we're more conscientious about that.
The tree selection too.
Correct, yeah. We're more conscientious about picking the right tree for the right location.
Which with the street replacement, or street replacement, tree, street tree replacement, you know, they can be picking trees that are more suited to that place.
We'll give them a finite list of what they can pick from.
Yeah.
So no, you know, Douglas or sequoias.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got two more pieces of business. The rest of Council, you think this is something we should pursue?
Okay.
Sounds like we got a consensus.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Couple of upcoming important things here still. Mr. McCarty on parks bond information, if you would.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm just giving a brief update on where we're at with pursuing a park bond. And I'm handing out right now a list of the joint task force and also the scheduled meetings that are starting next week. And that's why I'm here tonight because the first one is scheduled for December 10th, I believe. Basically, where we're at right now is staff sent out over 50, 60 letters to citizens in town. The Assistant City Manager and I tried to get as many different populations involved, whether it's an interest in ball fields or river access or people that were at the Memorial Park Master Plan years ago or the Boons Ferry or the overall master plan, people who attended those and were interested in various different things. We received back, well, some didn't get back to us at all. And then some were very busy. They just could not get anything else on their schedule. And then we received back about 25 to 30 that were positive that wanted to be involved. Obviously, that was a little bit too big, so we've cut it down to, I believe this is 17 on here right now, which is still fairly large. But it's kind of the first step in trying to pursue this park bond is to have the task force. And their, their task, if you will, will be to come up with a list of what projects they believe are the most important for Wilsonville. And they, over the, the meetings on the schedule here, over the, what, six meetings that they'll be attending, it's six, yeah. They will come back to council in April with their recommendations and then it'll be council's, of course, decision to see where we want to go with that. Also with the level, whether it be a, whatever the number will be, you know, I don't want to throw up numbers because it kind of freaks people out, the numbers that we're talking about. But we also got, our finance director gave us some really great information on what it would cost various householders or households to pay off the bond, whether it be a 10-year payback, a 20-year payback, based on different percentages. And so we've got all that information. We have hired a consultant to help with the park bond with the task force. She will be, you know, making sure they stay focused on what they're supposed to do. And we will be going over all three master plans that were done, again, the three I just mentioned, talking about all the public input, because there was extensive public input, if you remember, on all those plans. So we're obviously not going to forget all that input because that was a lot of work. And that'll all come into play with the decision that will be made by the task force. Really, I don't have much else. Again, I'm just, I'm just here to give you the information of where we're at. I wanted to get to the council before we start the meetings next week. The meetings will be here at 6 o'clock, open to the public, of course. And we're going to go from there.
And one other thing we did talk about was it's, since it's a task force, you may want to have a city councillor that represents the council, not to be chair, because we think that's more important for the parks chairman to be the chair of the committee. But if you wanted to discuss amongst yourself whether you want to have a primary and an alternate to be the council liaison to bring back reports to council for those meetings, that would be appropriate and acceptable, but that would be your call.
Council Acravol contacted me not too long after we first talked about this, indicating an interest, though I have been remiss in not following up with her on specifics about meeting dates and whatnot. But I don't know if anyone else is feeling an urgent participation need on this. Council Acravol, do you, is this something you would like to participate in?
Well, it is something that I would be interested in participating in. I did mention in the earlier communication, which I feel I need to do as well now, that on Tuesdays, and I see the time for the meeting is 6 to 8, I do have a commitment until 7:00 PM, so I would only be able to join for the last hour of the meeting. So I don't know if that changes.
For just that one meeting?
Every. If they're all on Tuesdays, then unfortunately, that would be the case for me.
Council West. I would be interested, I probably will show up and attend because I'm curious about it anyways. The December 10th meeting, of course, I'm out of the country, but the rest of those meetings, I'm not. And I would be, and I have probably out of the council obligations, the most freed up time for that. So if there's any way that I can be of service or help, I'd be more than willing to do that. And just because of interest, I probably will plan to show up to some of these meetings anyways or work with Kristen on that.
I wonder if the two of you could sort of work together and, Council West, if you, if the timing works better for you, then maybe Council Acravol would be best to be alternate?
That would be fine.
And then we can just chat.
Especially if you know that you're not there, then I'll jump in for the later half at least or, you know, have some presence there.
I, I think that's okay. Rest of Council, does that work? All right? I think that that may be as a plan.
And the only other addition we could have to the task force is the Assistant City Manager has been in contact with the school board. And I think she's got a couple possibilities there. And so that could be one, one more addition to the task force.
We are trying to get them to be on this task force.
Yeah. I'm personally hopeful that all of these representatives are strong, you know, and many have specific representations, which is great. I don't want to forget that there are many citizens in the community that are not organized sports users who also need recreation facilities.
That's, that's why we start with the master plans.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's the, the, the context in which I hope that we will proceed.
We're aware of the potential biases that could be applied.
And I think that will be the main focus is concentrating on the master plans, public comment, so.
Council Envo.
Well, that was going to be my question. I just wondered if there was any, if any of these were people who live south of the river? Because that's an area that's generally not served much by, by formal, you know.
I don't remember the addresses. I'm not sure.
There are some folks that live in Charbonneau.
There are, south.
We're also aware of some of the issues out there with the walking trails, so, and that's in our master plans as well.
No shortage of desire for parks facilities, is there?
No, there's not. And hopefully, we can put these master plans to use. That would be nice. We can do that, so.
That'd be great. And then the task force is also going to have to talk about timing because November 2020, there's not going to be anything at all on the back of the wall, right?
No, it's, yeah, no. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a nothing election, that's for sure. Also, I just want to mention holiday tree lighting is Wednesday night. Just had to throw that out there.
We ordered good weather too.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Okay, and Ms. Kerber, we've got a little update on.
We can change it right now.
Water intake facilities.
Yes. So the Willamette Intake Facility Commission Board, which is comprised of six different entities, Toowaltown Valley Water District, City of Hillsborough, City of Beaverton, City of Tigard, City of Sherwood, and the City of Wilsonville, is looking at who is going to be representative for each of the entities for the year 2020. So each of the agencies has one primary representative and one alternative representative. So they would like to know from the City of Wilsonville, who will be our representative for the year 2020? They typically have quarterly meetings or at least two per year. And they last maybe a couple hours and you address various things. You look at the work plan, you adopt the budget. If there's operations and maintenance contracts, you approve those. You look at if there's contracting rules, if there's a capital improvement of projects, you review those. Those are the type of things that the representative would do.
So our current primary is the mayor, our current alternate is Council Acravol. You're also looking to see if there's any interest for either one of those two to continue and/or run for a position on the board?
Correct. And that's the other question that they have is whoever the City of Wilsonville's representative is, if they would have any interest in being either the chair or the vice chair on the committee or the board.
The meetings have seemed pretty low key in the range of meetings that I go to. It's not a very high pressure kind of a deal.
Well, and plus, we don't really have a large dog in that fight.
Well, no, other than, you know, the plans for the updating of the planet.
The pipe going through.
But I'm just saying that the.
But the width has really nothing to do with the pipe.
Right.
There's two different entities.
Right, right. It's the intake facility, which we. Right, right. It's the intake facility, which we share.
Right. Which is the screens, the intake pipe, the caisson, and the building that goes around the caisson.
So, Counselor Acravall, would you have an interest in taking the lead on that, since they're not meeting on Tuesday night? I mean, since...
Do you want to flip primary and alternate, or do you want to just excuse yourself completely, Mayor?
Well, you're going to need an alternate.
Are you throwing it out there that you're willing to give up your place?
I'm willing to give it up, if somebody would be willing to take it on.
Typically, the meetings are Monday, and like, the next meeting is Monday, January 27.
They do feed you.
They do.
Without sending incentives. You have to drive to Tigard to get the meal.
They're not on council nights. At least I have some.
The last of the month.
Yeah, the last.
It's a long drive if they're at the water place out there.
It's Toowaltown Valley Water District.
It's well out on the far side of Beaverton, Nalua.
Drive past Barbara's house.
It's way out.
Pass WIF.
Stop in for a little while.
I have none. I'm coming and going.
No, it can take 45, 50 minutes to get there on a, you know...
I mean, I, I'm not opposed to helping. I, once again, have probably the most open schedule on the council extracurriculars. So, if you guys want to utilize me, I'm available.
It does, I mean, it would be good to have some continuity there. If Counselor Acravall would be willing to be the primary.
Primary, you know, so she's got a little, you, you have experience there. You're aware of how it works and what it does. Maybe Mr. West would be an alternate?
We can give you as much of a briefing as you want to get up to speed on it, if you feel like you need it. Delora would be happy to give you the history and/or Barbara.
Yeah, me with Delora. Yeah, I'll be more happy to be an alternate.
Yeah, you might want to look at the WIF agreement. And if you're one of the officers, perhaps you could propose moving the meetings.
That's true.
I didn't hear her volunteering.
I did. There's the incentive.
It doesn't sound like we're going to be looking to be officers of the WIF board.
Maybe Counselor Acravall would like to be. Only for the reason of moving the meeting. I don't think that they would go to...
They will not go for that.
They're not.
Well, they've held one in, at the south facility. What is it, right up in Tigard?
Oh, the Tigard Public Works?
Public Works Building, right. Which is a whole lot easier to get to than all the way up to the other one, so.
Yeah. That's fine. I think, I'd be happy to, to...
Do you want to check with Odessa before you commit?
I know. Where'd she go?
I don't know.
She's the keeper of my schedule.
I'm just like, Mom, that's not going to work.
Yeah. So, so you would be the primary, and Counselor West would be the alternate? And then, did you say you were interested in being the chair? Oh, okay. All right, just want to clarify.
But thank you.
Unless they could change the...
There she is. She gave a thumbs up. She's okay with it.
We're opening business.
Okay. All right. So, so that's a plan for the year, then?
On time.
Anything else we need to?
Nope, take it downstairs.
All right, let's call us adjourned then at 7:22. And we got a couple of minutes before we reconvene downstairs.